Those of you that are here, please pass on what you see tonight to your friends. And those people, I look out and I don't think there's any right or wrong in this whole situation. There's no rea-- somebody asked me earlier if I thought maybe if somebody got rowdy in here, I would get angry. I said, "No, because all these people are my friends." We're not, we're not here to fight amongst ourselves. We're here to get together. We know people disagree with what we're doing, but we're going to put that together. And with your help, we can start this thing rolling. And I will show you in a short while what we might be able to do. And it's going to be a long, long trip we're going to be taking. So part of what we've been doing, and I, let me back up just, just a little bit. In my mind, the premise, or the way this is going to work, the only way this is going to work, is if everybody feels heard, and if everybody feels included, and all the collective intelligence of Harney County can go in one direction. Now, it doesn't mean we're all going to absolutely agree. Sometimes we're going to have to agree to disagree. There are cards. They're, they're a little bigger than a three by five card. We put them on all the tables. Now, some people aren't going to be comfortable coming up here and speaking. Some people would be comfortable writing something down. But the point is, everybody needs to be heard, right? Every person in this room is important. And I really, I can't stress that enough, and I hope I'm getting that across. It's not the loud voices, it's not the grumpy voices, it's every voice. And every voice and every person going forward. That's really, that's really, the fairgrounds, the other hand, that would be an assembly. And that assembly would agree to put people forward in a representative way from lots of different parts, in this case, Harney County. So we'd have people from the south, yeah. We'd have people from Drusee and Crane. And so everybody felt that they were being heard. That's, that's really where we want to go. These are the first people. But we can be replaced just as quickly as, as not. So don't feel like you weren't included, or you're not being heard, or nobody asked me. Don't go there. Get involved if you're interested, don't get involved if you're not. Okay? What, what I was asked to do is, is we've got a few things that we've put together. And really, we're early enough in this process that I'm going to, I'm going to take a stab at calling these drafts, right? This is all going to evolve. We've got two documents here, and if everybody wants to take one home, it's awesome. One is, is a resolution of the people of Harney County, which sounds pretty bold considering the people of Harney County haven't even seen this yet. It's a shot, right? The other is, is possibilities on a spreadsheet that compare state and federal controlled grounds and how the revenues might be different. Those are some of the things we've been working. Tim, do you want me to read through the whereas's?
No. We'll, we'll cover that. That'll be covered in the department.
Okay. So, anyway, here's some collateral material, if you want it. We've got it for you. We've got a couple hundred copies of each, so, anyway. That's, is that enough?
Yeah, they could find them also. Those documents will be on the website.
Right. These documents and other things are on the website as well. Harney County Committee of Safety. Oh, did I, did I cover the Committee of Safety? So, yeah, they put the Committee of Safety together. Now, these are historic terms, and that's, that's why we're using these. harneycountycommitteeofsafety.org, for those of you that can do that. Good.
Thank you, Rick. We'll now move into our PowerPoint presentation. Chris, you're on that. He's got the first slide up there. If you can't see those small words in the back, or possibly off in right field, I'll read it for you. It says, "A journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step," by Liao Zhu, who's a, uh, well, good Greek. China dominated all the economic markets of the day, so we better have a Chinese philosopher here to-- a time when one year makes a calf crop that works. There's never been a time that planting that one alfalfa circle worked. It was a series of steps that made it happen. And to me, walking in as an outsider in Harney County, I see that, Tim, as the-- Speaker. We feel the federal agencies are overreaching their authority in many jurisdictional directions within our county, and also specifically with the Hammond's. Number three, we do not speak for the Hammond's. Number four, we do not speak for Ammon Bundy, or his associates, or any other advocacy groups. Number five, we do want to unify the county for a better future for all of its residents. Number six, we hope to work with and not against the county sheriff and his officers. Number seven, we do want the people of the entire county of Harney to be involved in the issues in front of us regarding the land use and economy of our county. Number eight, we do not want any issues to create a violent confrontation between any groups. Number nine, we are not involved in planning protests in Burns or the convoy from Bend to Burns on the 2nd of January 2015--
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, that's, yeah, right here. I'd like to speak to that just real quickly. We did partic-- we did participate in the rally to support Hammond's. However, we were not involved in the planning of that. We were, we were, at the last minute, we decided that we were going to participate because we weren't, we were unsure of how it was going to go. But it went very well in the community here, and we were glad to be there to support the Hammond's. That's, so that's, that's how we fit in with that rally, that we were there to support Hammond's, and we think the community did a good job in the turnout on that.
Number 10, we think that there may be a systematic statutory solution to the jurisdictional issue like the Hammond's. Number 11, we believe that our county can have a much better economy by using the resources contained within Harney County. Number 12, we love our-- --nation and our country, and we want the best for them and for the future-- --means that this group operates at the consent of the people, operates at the consent of the people in this county. Okay? We are not speaking for you until we, we know that you're behind us and with us. So that's what consensual, consensual voice will mean. It doesn't mean that we're going to go out and run around doing things without having this community behind us. That's, that's, that's why I put that in there, so that you'll know what we, what we mean.
Tim, you want to walk through these grazing benefits, local control as opposed to federal control?
Yeah, yeah, we'll go through the, the next two slides. Next three slides. Um, the, um, group, a group called, their acronym is PERC, put together a study in early, um, 2015, comparing the economy and the revenues generated off of state lands versus federal lands in Arizona, New Mexico, Idaho, and Montana. In this one, we, on this slide here, we've got a comparison, and I'll get back there. Can you all hear me if I stand back there so I can see this?
No, they can't.
Stretch it out there a little bit. As you'll, as, as you can see, on Forest Service ground, on grazing, they, they, the return for grazing is six cents an acre for the US Forest Service ground, and eight cents an acre for Bureau of Land Management. In Montana, their return there on the state ground is $1.94 an acre. In Idaho, it's 95 cents. In New Mexico, it's 72 cents. And in Arizona, it's 31 cents. For an average of those state-run lands, of the return of a dollar sixty, a dollar sixty-three per acre of grazing ground. Next slide, please. In, as far as timber goes, Arizona and New Mexico do not have state timber lands. So this is a comparison with Montana and Idaho. What you see here is the US Forest Service, um, their profit for, for 1,000 board feet of timber produced is a negative $148.90. On BLM ground, it's a negative $197.71 for every 1,000 board feet that's hauled to the mill. In Montana, the profit to the state is $60.80 positive. In Idaho, it's $126.13 positive for every 1,000 board feet. This is, and these, these numbers are not to say that, the, and if you, if you look this paper up and start following it through, you'll see what the intent of this was. The intent of this was to demonstrate the incapacity of the federal government to run an economic operation on our managed lands. So--
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yes, sir!
Uh, next slide, please. As I said about making a spreadsheet of my own, and this is Harney, Harney versus current resource management revenue potential. This is, this is going to be on our website. We've got, we've got copies of it here for you to take home and look at. I'm not going to go through the details of this. The bottom line is, um, you see here, these are rest, this is, um, the only, basically the only timber that's being cut in Harney County right now is being cut on BLM ground. And they're losing, uh, they're actually, I-- The 197, the revenue per 1,000 board feet on federal ground is a negative 197. Um, on, on the average of, uh, accounting, the county potential would be $114 to the good. The total revenue, um, here is, I, it's about $985,000 lost. About $985,000 lost on the federal, federal grounds versus, um, on the, if we use the numbers that that study came out with, we would be actually pulling in about a positive $3.9 million per year in timber revenues, like the states of, um, Montana and Idaho do. So that's, that's that number right in there versus that number there. If you take this whole thing, put it all together, but, and I, I played with these numbers in here, the number of AUMs and all that. I worked backwards from the available information on AUMs to create grazing acres. And these are approximate numbers, so don't take them exactly. But bottom line is, somewhere between 12 and 15 million dollars annual revenue off of, we could increase our annual revenue, 12 to 15 million dollars, by taking over these federal lands and running the grazing ourselves and the timber ourselves. Okay, that's, that's a very important, important point. Because as we go through this process, and you're, as you're going to see in a few minutes, we're going to be starting to talk about, um, what, how we, how we can take over federal grounds in a, in a legal fashion in, in Harney County. People are going to be scared to death, "Oh, my God, there goes my job at the Forest Service, my God, there goes my job at the BLM." Okay, if you look at this number, these numbers in here, by, by doing this, we, 1.5 times the jobs will be created. And three, the, so, the bottom line is, the jobs will be there if-- --anybody else. They're rough, but, but the point is made very clearly by looking at these numbers, what we can do on our, on our grounds versus the waste that the, that the federal government puts into these projects and uses our, and loses our tax dollars as they generate what income they do generate off of our forest and our grazing lands.
Tell you what, a guy moves into a house, first thing he's going to do is always rearrange the furniture. Uh, for, particularly for media and anybody that's interested, I know that's really tough to see, maybe tough to follow, P-E-R-C dot org. PERC? P-E-R-C dot org. I don't have the--
Property and Environmental Research Center. Divided lands is the paper. Divided lands, property and environmental research center, done in March of 2015, study.
Some really good stuff. It's very credible. I just want to make sure you have now. The, the comparison for Harney County that Tim put together is not on there, but all of the baseline on the states is excellent information and can be found. Okay, Dwayne?
My turn?
You're up.
Wow. I hope we can get through this.
Rearrange the furniture, maybe like Tim.
First of all, thank you all for coming. This is very important to all of us as Harney County residents. I have been on this committee as long as the rest of them have been, and I am the worst speaker, so bear with me. As a committee, we came together and drew up a letter to ask Ammon Bundy to leave the refuge. We came together with the letter, and we agreed with the letter that we devised. But we, not all of us agreed to when it should be delivered. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melody, and she's going to read you the letter. And thank you again for coming. We agreed to disprove, but we agree.
We've only been on this committee a couple weeks, and two weeks ago, I didn't know what a committee of safety was. So I looked up the definition, and I'm going to read it to you before I read you this letter from the committee of safety.
Melody, step up. Use the microphone.
The first committee of safety was formed prior to the Revolutionary War to fight the tyranny and oppression of a corrupt government and its officials, and to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the local citizens. So that's the definition of a committee of safety, and it's 300 or 400 years old. Ammon, the Harney County Committee of Safety, as it was originally named, delivers this letter to you, the voice of those occupying the Mount here National Wildlife Refuge headquarters. We thank you for shining light on the Hammond case here in Harney County. Your actions have created a national focus on the Hammond's and other issues here and across the West that have created mutual distrust, anger, and unrest between the people of the land and the federal government. We thank you for stirring us to action, which we hope will peacefully lead to justice for the Hammond's, and ultimately, a better Harney County, a better state, and a better nation. We were very upset that you chose to take the aggressive action of occupying the refuge, and did it without our knowledge, or any other local approval, and in the fashion that created huge distrust and loss of credibility of, and for us as a group of residents within the community. We approved of most of your message, but disapproved of your unilateral methods of occupation. With that being said, we feel that any good which may come out of this event has reached its full potential. We ask that you organize your people, explain that your point has been made, and leave in a peaceful, honorable fashion. This will allow us in Harney County to carry on with the business of improving the lives and opportunities that our beautifully blessed country offers to its bounty and natural resources. Peace be with you.
Chris Riles, speaking out, and talk about cooperation with law enforcement.
Hello, again. My name's Chris Riles. We're not here to downgrade our law enforcement in any way, shape, or form. We are not here to cause problems. We are not here to do anything against our local law enforcement. We support them 100%. We are here to help and work with these people, not against them. I want people to realize that we need the support of the, the, the community. We need the support of the people in Harney County. You need to understand that fear and intimidation does not get people together. You can't organize people in a positive manner with fear. You can't do it. You can do it with common sense and love and cooperation and a community, an accumulation of people's ideas. We hope to be able to get your support to do that. We hope to have the support of our law enforcement people. We definitely are not against law enforcement. We are not for any type of violence. But one of the powers that the committee of safety has is to call on the militia if they're needed. When I heard that, I thought, "I'm going to stay on this committee." Because if, if a committee is that powerful to be able to pull a trigger of this magnitude, I'm going to be on that committee because they're not going to pull it in my county. I don't wish for death to anyone. I don't wish for any of our law enforcement people to be endangered, or our citizens, or any of the Bundys, or anyone. I think that people can stand-- --and, and voice their concerns, whether they get along with the people in Har- in Harney County. We have no issues with the law enforcement whatsoever. We want that to be clear. Does anyone have any questions of me about this? Go ahead.
75% of the community, 50 to 75%, without statistics, work for the government. In our contract, it's not to say that. That's why I feel we don't have the public supporting the government.
I understand that. Did everybody here, or--
We have questions to answer later.
Okay. So, unless there's something else?
Kicking you out.
I'm, I'm being kicked out.
I need you to run my PowerPoint.
We didn't hear what the young woman said, though.
We will repeat that. She will have the first question, comment when we start. Which is right after I read this resolution. Are you ready, Chris? This is the resolution of the people of Harney County on the status of Harney County lands managed by the federal government. Whereas Harney County is a rural county within the state of Oregon, within which about 73% -- that is equivalent to 4.8 million acres out of 6.5 million --is managed by the federal government. And whereas Harney County is blessed with an abundance of grazing and forest lands which are capable of providing valuable resources to its people, county, and state government. And whereas Harney County at one time was one of the wealthiest per capita counties in Oregon when its resources were being developed and utilized to their sustainable capacity. And whereas Harney County is now near the bottom of the per capita income in Oregon due to the diminished use of its natural resources and mismanagement of its public lands. And whereas the federal government and the state of Oregon have failed to manage these public lands in a count, in the county, in a manner that is protective and beneficial to the residents of Harney County. And whereas the people of Harney County, due to the county's rural and natural resource land character, are unable to sustain an economic base within the county that will provide its residents and families with ongoing sources of jobs and services without the sustained contribution to its economy from those endemic natural resources. And whereas the federal agencies are constrained and at the mercy of a small but vocal group of radical environmentalists who use a myriad of laws regulating federally managed lands, which creates for them an imprudentable obstacle to the development and sustained use of the resources within the county. And whereas the ownership slash control of those lands within the sovereign state of Oregon are held to a de facto manner by the federal government, which holding in is in violation of the Constitution of the United States, which would be Article 1, Section 8, Clause 17, as well as being to the detriment of the best interest of the state of Oregon and the county of Harney, and the county of Harney residents. And whereas--
Yes, sir.
--within the county of Harney residents resides-- Let me start this one over. Whereas within the county of Harney resides the personnel, talent, and skilled workforce to locally manage those public lands and develop and market those public land resources in order to better sustain the local and state economies while providing a healthier, safer environment on those public lands now under federal management. And whereas, because the county sheriff, duly elected by the people, is the rightful premier law enforcement officer in Harney County, and the first and last line of protection from abuses, both from private and public offenders of our laws and constitution, and set constitution as premier law of the land. And whereas the local management of the public land within Harney County will create a simpler, more efficient, more manageable, more productive, and more functional use of those lands. Therefore, be it resolved, we, the undersigned residents of Harney County, do hereby support the development of a-- And whereas the ownership slash control of those lands within the sovereign state of Oregon are held to a de facto manner by the federal government, which holding in is in violation of the Constitution of the United States, which would be Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen, as well as being to the detriment of the best interest of the state of Oregon and the county of Harney residents. And whereas
Yes, sir.
...within the county of Harney residents resides, let me start this one over, whereas within the county of Harney resides the personnel, talent, and skilled workforce to locally manage those public lands and develop and market those public land resources in order to better sustain the local and state economies while providing a healthier, safer environment on those public lands now under federal management. And whereas, because the county sheriff duly elected by the people is the rightful premier law enforcement officer in Harney County and the first and last line of protection from abuses, both from private and public offenders of our laws and constitution and set constitution as premier law of the land. And whereas the local management of the public land within Harney County will create a simpler, more efficient, more manageable, more productive, and more functional use of those lands. Therefore, be it resolved, we, the undersigned residents of Harney County, do hereby support the development of a plan to provide the expedient, systematic, and harmonious transfer of all currently managed federal lands within Harney County to the jurisdiction of the people of Harney County, Oregon.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah! Yeah! With that, we will move into our respectful discussion. Questions, comments? I would ask that you stand, state your name, where you're from. If you're not comfortable standing, asking a public question, there are cards, as indicated before, I think Rick mentioned to you, there are cards on your table. If you have a pen, feel free to write your question or comment on your card, pass it to the front. I'm lazy and it'll end up right here. It's a good deal. And maybe you want to remain anonymous. Sir, you'll be second. Young lady, please repeat your question and state your name.
I'm Angelina Kimble. I'm originally from Harney County in Oregon, Grant. My grandma had a restaurant here for over fifty years, two names, remember. Grandpa drove the railroad here, other grandpa pulled green chain here. Lot of blood in this town. And I'm back here supporting folks. I hope that people can hear. I have family all over and seventy-five percent to fifty percent of this town work for the government and have contracted that they will not state their opinion, otherwise they lose their form of income in the household. So I feel like they're not being supported because of fear and it's really a shame. I have opinions from all over this town that aren't here today because of fear. Fear of being honest, fear of losing your life, potentially, not having a place to live in this full festival at town you can't buy a pair of tennis shoes unless you drive a hundred and twenty miles to. That's all.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you. One other thing, I inherited my seventeen-year-old daughter's smartphone somehow, which means I have a timer. And two minutes, please. Please be respectful of the entire audience and we would ask you to keep your comments two minutes or less. You, sir, can use this microphone.
Thank you. I'll speak fast. My next Simon, I live in Drizzy. Raised Riverside, lived on Riverside, one school there, doesn't exist anymore. We had a ranch we were living on, farming place, that's just below the one thing reservoir, doesn't exist anymore. All the little places was deed up. I got a whole bunch of people in the cemetery, just be home center in this village. Both my granddads freighted out of Riverside, that freight wagon. When I was a kid, there was two main industries in Harney County. Farming, largest, thunder, cover, mill in the world. And cattle, ranching. The one hay, all that ground out there wasn't worth ten dollars an acre. You couldn't give it to people from here to Crane. Wasn't worth anything then. With no water, no electricity. We came a long way and I understand what you're trying to do and I agree, but I also know the government. They're not going to back off. I would think, I agree with everything except the very last portion when it says, we want to run them off and we'll take over. If you could get a consensus to have some say with the government, then you might get something through. And I agree with all the people that came out tonight. I've been telling Rick and different ones, I'm sitting home having done one thing in behalf of Hammond's or any of this movement, so it's time. However, we got to remember, we got to be realistic. I know it's tough to say, well, I'll settle for part of what I want, but sometimes you have to. We've got a situation here and if this grows with people like what was on the refuge and if they classify this meeting as similar to that and these people that here, you and I, as similar to what's on the refuge, I don't want to scare you, but for somebody in the White House to call this martial law, then we'll have that group forever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I want to address that with anyone in the committee to correct me, but I want to address both of those comments. The absolute way to deal with the tyranny, the fear that you both bring up is in this room. People show up in masses. Absolutely. Closer.
Closer. How's that?
Good.
For those of you that don't know me, my name's BJ Silver. I'm from Redmond. I'm the one that's been out here helping. I've met a lot of nice people out here that I think when this is all said and done, we'll have some lasting friendships. What I want you guys to understand is, you know, what they're doing out in that refuge is their choice. Groups have called me militia, groups have called me whatever they want to call and then tried to tie us together with those guys. Well, I'm here with you right now, okay? There's militia, there's people here from Idaho, there's people here from Montana, there's people here from Nevada and other areas of Oregon that are here for you, that are here for this community and for this Committee of Safety, okay? So when you classify us as a militia, well, I'm no different than you. I'm just like you. I'm an American, I'm an Oregonian, and that's what I wanted to share with you, is that you can reach out to other people to help. It doesn't have to be a militia, it can be we, the people. You can reach out to your neighbors in Redmond, you can reach out to your neighbors in Idaho when you need help. If I needed help, I would be happy to reach out to you guys in hopes that you would return the same favor. So I want you guys to know that the groups here, Pacific Patriot Network, Central Oregon Constitutional Guard, Idaho Three Percent, we're here to help you. You can reach out to us, we're here for you. We were the ones that set up the town hall meeting originally for these guys, not Hammond. I set that up, okay? I'm not trying to take anything away from what Hammond did, but what I want to stress to you guys is that there's others here that are care and there's others that are here that really worry about the plight of this country. And so if you need anything, we're here for you. You don't have to be afraid of us, we're just like you, we're your neighbors, we're your brothers, we're your sisters, fathers, mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. I really like this microphone thing. You coming up? What I mean is that I realize it's a job to get from back there, but this young lad just did it. You can all come up here to the microphone. There's no point in people talking if everybody can't hear you. Don't forget the part about tell us who you are, where you're from.
Okay, Mark Owen from Crane, living in Harney County.
Well, sir.
They can't hear you. They can't. Mark Owen from Crane, lived in Harney County now twenty-three years. I appreciate you guys having the scene. I appreciate the comment that was stated, if you're ignorant, you don't know how to act. That's why I came to try to educate myself, but I wish more people from Harney County would come. We need to make our decisions on our own, on what we want to do and how we want to do it. One of the reasons I came was so I could educate myself. So I'd like to ask two questions. One on your website, it states you will be the governing body if the militia comes.
Thank you. Future commenters, that's how you use the microphone.
And I don't expect answers right now, we can have discussion later, but on your website it does say you will be the governing body if the militia does come. It doesn't say if you will call the militia, because as you said, you might not want to call the militia, but it's very evident maybe in this situation that the militia might show up. If Bundy goes through with his program, gets the deeds reported in the county for the rightful owners of evil police or refuge, the militia might come to try to protect that and to see that go through. Have you given any thought how you will be that governing body?
I'd like to address that for just a second. What we have proposed is to put together a plan. Hammond, Bundy has a plan. We do not necessarily go along with what he wants to do. That is an opportunity, maybe if we get the community behind it. We can evaluate his plan versus other plans that we may come up with, but let's not get confused here. We're not throwing a plan at you, we're asking you to help us make a plan. There's a whole lot of difference here. What he has in his mind, and he's worked on it a long time, he has a plan, he thinks will work. We do not know if it'll work or not. What I'm saying here is that the plan that he has is his plan, we are going to develop our own plan, we've told him that. So that's, we hope that clears it up. We do not have a plan on the table. We have a request to build a plan with this group here in this community.
Thanks, Tim. I would encourage you.
So to finish that, the way it's supposed to work is we have the assembly, as I said before, which is who is here. The assembly puts forth the Committee of Safety, the assembly comes together, puts this Committee of Safety up. Should there be a need, should there be a situation that would arise, the assembly would ask the Committee of Safety to call in a militia for a specific event. That's how it was designed to do or work in colonial times. And you can sort of almost reel back what they were dealing with in those times. And so that's how it's supposed to work. We have a little bit of a different paradigm right now and we're working through that.
Before you guys come, sir, I'm going to throw in, is there any one media question that you want to ask right now? Quiet media. I saw you first, sir.
According to the Oregon Constitution, the militia is under the governor of the state. Okay, let me repeat it. According to the Oregon Constitution, the militia is under the governor of the state. I don't see nothing in the Oregon Constitution that gives any Committee of Safety the right to call up the militia or to correct them in any way. As far as the Hammond's, I think we should be pushing for clemency, pushing the White House to go for clemency over them. And finally, in the last few days, I've heard a lot of people talk about interpreting the Constitution. I believe the interpretation of the Constitution is up to the United States Supreme Court. And if you don't think in the last two hundred and twenty, thirty years that they haven't interpreted the property clauses of the U.S. Constitution and you guys haven't been reading too much of the law, because they have did it a number of times. As, I'm going to repeat something here, I hesitate to say it, it's a saying. Opinions alike, blank, 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 all, we all have one and most of the time they state. And that's what I got to say for most of what I've heard about the interpretation of the Constitution and by people in these meetings. Thank you.
Comment? I'm just going to say one thing about my knowledge and I want you to, this is not Oregon law, there's a difference between the governor, the governor has control of the state of the National Guard within a state. The militia is not the National Guard. I think those two things do get You're next, sir. And it will go to you. Do you want to comment on that?
I have a comment.
Okay, quickly, about that comment?
No, outside of the militia, I have a concern about the Federal Bureau of Investigations and what they're doing at their compound. I have
Okay, we'll get to that. Let's not go there. This is for the people here. This is for the people. Yes, sir. You had
This question benefits the people. My question does benefit the people.
My name's Jamie Landon, I was born upon the hill. I came back
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'm hoping we can all try to get our voices heard, so we can try and prevent this from happening to anyone else also. I really wanna try to get the Hammond's out of prison with all of you. But even if we can't, we can't stop there. Like the man said before me, this list is going to keep getting bigger. We have to change it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Rice. I'm out of Josephine County. I'm also one of the founders of the Pacific Patriot Network. I also ran the Sugar Pie Mine operation down in Josephine County, when we had the same issue here with BLM overreach. This takes moral courage. This takes a dedication to see betterment in the community, and it's important to come together in unity. The one thing I continuously preach, and preach, is strength in numbers. This room is the starting point. It's strength in numbers. We do not advocate what's happened out of the refuge and the way it has occurred, but it has occurred, and it's started the dialogue. And that's the most important thing. We need to move past the action and get to the resolution. Part of it is, if for models, you talk about Apache County and Modoc County, Arizona, they have done this. They have taken back their federally managed lands to county control. They've been incredibly successful at it. And it has done what they were saying. I know there's fear within this community about where your jobs and your paychecks are gonna come for. Start researching Apache County in Arizona. They have successfully created an economy. What you're dealing with here in Harney County is a fire economy. We're seeing this spread throughout the West, where everyone works seasonally, fighting wildfires or doing things with the BLM or the management, but you don't have the opportunity to develop your own independent economy. It's a very scary step. You have the skill sets in this room. You have the ability to do this. On the Hammond situation, we all saw Representative Greg Wollin get up on the House floor. You saw the frustration. I spoke with him a couple of times. You saw his frustration, when it was gonna be a five-minute speech turned into almost a 25-minute speech. You can see your elected congressional representative is venting the same frustration that everyone in this room and in this county, either they're gonna speak forcefully or not feel. That's understood. You can see the problem. BLM, in its policies, is mandated. Manded, it's not a choice. And I heard the word earlier, coordinate to consensus. They must. Now, what's unique about this committee that's formed, so you understand the power, it literally becomes an administrative body. It has the ability, it has the ability, like a school district, a fire district, or any other district, to work with what your input is, and they can formally go to the federal government outside of Harney County, outside of your elected representatives, and BLM must coordinate with them. They take on a responsibility as long as you have these elected officials and these representatives. You can do that.
Brandon Barron. I'm a 25-year local, local business owner. First thing I wanna get out there is, I think this is an accurate, verifiable number, is 20% of Harney County payroll is federal payroll. So, I hear a lot of 50 to 75% numbers of the county. No, it's not. But it's still a big number. To the comment about the Supreme Court being the final say, I actually think it's us that's the final say. And what's been taken away from us, what was taken away from the Hammond's, their right to be judged by their peers here in our county. We have the right of jury notification, and I think that needs to be used, but it's been taken away from us. To speak to some of the federal lands issues, I think one place to look, I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, it's just it's a resource, it's the ALC, the American Lands Council, they're the outfit that's really pushing the Utah deal. I've talked to Ken Ivory and a couple other people in their organization over a year ago. I've spoken with Apache County officials over a year ago on multiple occasions, talking about what they did using coordinating agency status. Baker County, I think, just recently took up coordinating agency status, and as far as I know, they are the first county in Oregon to take that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Jason Van Tatenhove. I'm with Oath Keepers. I'm the National Media Director. I came from Rexford, Montana. And I've been on every operation the Oath Keepers has had since Bundy Ranch on. And I gotta say, I'm very, very excited about what you guys are talking about and how you're speaking. This can be a model that can replicate across the country. This is something that's endemic across the West, and it's affecting all of us. And if we can figure it out here, this is what we try to get local communities, when they're having these problems, to do, is to act for themselves on a local level. And you guys are doing that. I just wanna say, this is exactly what we wanna hear, and if we can help in any way, we've never had a bullet fly, we've never had one drop of blood dropped. I go to these things with a camera and a microphone. I never bring a gun. But I just wanna say, you guys are doing the right thing. Keep the courage up there, and make this a model for the rest of the country.
We have the same issue here. My name's Brandon Curtis. I'm the president of the 3% of Idaho. I'm also a founder of the PPA Network as well. I wanted to speak to you guys a little bit. First of all, I wanna say thank you for what you guys are doing. It's great courage. Thank you very much. Keep it up. I wanna speak to you a little bit about our presence in town. I have received phone calls, emails off our website, all kinds of questions, asking what we're here. Refer, hearing a lot of reference to militias and things like that. We are gonna have a presence in town over the next week, just to make sure and ensure the safety both of your community, with all the attention that it's getting, and as well as the individuals up at the refuge. What that looks like is, will be a safety buffer, if you will, to make sure any fringe element-type patriots, if you will, if you guys heard all the rumors that are gonna come here, we're gonna make sure they don't. We're building relationships with the community here. A lot of you have seen us around over the last two weeks, am I right? So, we wanna make sure we maintain the communication with this committee, as well as your citizens. And I'm from Boise, Idaho, so I'm just down the road, so this affects me as well. And I know if we have the same issue in Boise, I'd want you guys to come. But I don't want you to be afraid of the presence you see us here. We're all family people, God-ary people, whatever you wanna say, but we're just like you, no different. My organization is actually not a militia, so I wanted to spell that right now, so I hear that term's run out a lot. We're just community members as well, right down the road. So, don't be afraid of us, okay? We're here for a purpose, and that's to protect your community, as well as the gentlemen up at the refuge. Any questions on that? Okay, perfect.
My name's George Wilber. I'm a Harney County resident from July 18th, 1949. I wanna ask the committee here, it seems to me the most critical objective should be to get Mr. Bundy off the refuge and to dial down this, no offense, militia boys, but the idea that we're going to have a confrontation of any variety. The last thing that I wanna see is my little town to be the bloodshed place where that all goes down. That, to me, is your guys', our number-one objective. Secondly, these federal folks up here at Lincoln Junior High, they don't take prisoners, and we all know that. So, the first thing we need to do is get them out of town, along with Bundy.
George, we hear you.
And as that letter, as the letter that Tim put together came forward, there was three of us that did sign it, and three of us that did. The point was, the iron is hot, and we can do something. The fear of three of us was that Hammond would leave because we asked him to, and we'd all go back to the way it was. And it's selfish not to do that, because that would keep everybody more safe. We wanna get it right. And so, we're right there, and that's what we're shooting for, too. We want the feds out, and we want Hammond to go home to his family, but we don't wanna lose this momentum and this coming together in Harney County.
Extreme restraint from a very reliable source. The feds have shown...
George, what did you say?
That the feds have showed extreme restraint from a reliable source inside...
Okay. Some lady?
I'm Erin Moffin. I'm a rancher. My husband and I own a ranch in Riley. We were talking about the economy of the county and how this would enhance the economy, which I completely agree. But I want everybody to know that not only the economy would be enhanced, the environment would be enhanced. And I wanna explain that just a little bit. We have wonderful people that work on the ground here in Harney County, from the ranchers, to the farmers, to the BLM employees, to the foresters. We all know what to do on the ground level. Now, these radical environmental groups have used the fear of litigation in such a way that it's tied the hands of these good, hard-working, on-the-ground people, whether it be the government, scientists. We have scientific proof that a lot of things can be done to help sage grouse, to help different species, to help the ecosystem as a whole. We've got all the scientific information, but yet we can't use it because of the fear of litigation. And I want people to know that from around, you know, around the state, around the country, that this not only would be an enhancement to the economy, but an enhancement to the environment. And I want everybody to remember the last words that Dwight Hammond spoke to us as a community before he left, when we were marching. He said, "This is not about me. This is about our country." And I think we should all remember that.
I think we all know that Dwight and Stephen are where they are, because Susie's an excellent researcher and knows how to prove a science that counts and prove the environment.
Cowboy in South Florida, South Alabama, Northern Idaho, and now I'm here. And I have seen this everywhere I have been. The overreach of the government, the overreach of these small community governments that move in and get their power and think they can lord over everybody. This is not just a Harney County problem. It is nationwide, from the Pacific Ocean all the way to the Atlantic Ocean. I can guarantee you that, because I have seen it. We need all of these people that are coming in here, from the Bundys to the gentleman back here for the 3%, we need all of these people that come in here from these other states, such as Nebraska and Montana. We all need to stand together. If we don't, they're just gonna laugh at us.
For the record, my name is Marty Suter-Gould. I'm a native Oregonian, and 16 years I've been in Harney County. And I made a commitment to Susie and Dwight at our last Crane basketball game, that I would do everything that I could to help carry their message. And I stand here today, I got to know Susie, because I am one of those people that works for local government. I grew up in agriculture. I came here from the private sector, and I am dedicated to ag and ranchers. And I got to know Susie through Water Law. My mother, I'm from the Columbia Basin, my mother dedicated her last breath to fighting water rights issues in the Columbia River. I watched her neighbors, her friends, fall off one by one, and lacked support for her to her dying day, and for the mediators to tell her, and my father, as they said, that the Oregon Water Resources would break them. They knew she was right, that these people had lost their water rights, but to tell them that they would break her. And so, I've dedicated my life to the people like Susie and my mother to help make change. And my fear in my community, which I have desired to live in, is that we will not all stand together and appreciate one another's differences and come together. And it is my desire and my hope for Dwight, Steve, Susie, Claire, Gorman, and the family, and our community, that we can find some resolve out of this and pull together and acknowledge one another as people, while being respectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this young lady's coming. Did any of the end tables have cards I can collect them? All right, going good.
I'll try to speak up. I wanna show you something. I stood under a bridge with guns facing it, and we were unarmed citizens, and that's what will happen to you, and that's why we're here. I'm a mother of a lot of children and grandchildren. I am not afraid to take them out to the ranch, and I'm not afraid of the Bundy's. They're the ones, and I can tell you, God is with them, and God is with you, and you are righteous people. And our hearts went out to the Hammond's, because we know how it feels. And we have to stand up, but we can never do it alone. We have to, united we stand, divided we'll fall. We have to work it together. We love you, you're our neighbors, you're our friends, and God loves all of us, and He loves this country. We have to stand and restore this Constitution, or we've lost our country. God bless you, and we do help you, and come and help us. If you can, we're here to help you. Come and seek us.
My name is Pete Tantilli. And one thing that I've learned through this experience in talking to the community members is that people are now learning what the true authority is of a constitutional sheriff. I've heard that time and time again. And I wanna suggest to the Committee of Safety that the public be informed that the sheriff is the top law enforcement official in the county, that he has jurisdiction over the FBI, that if he needs the FBI, he calls them in, that he is not operating at the behest of the federal government. Because I believe, ladies and gentlemen, maybe you can tell the Committee of Safety, wouldn't it be a conflict of interest for the Federal Bureau of Investigations to be surveilling the community, finding out who's for or against, and then working on behalf of the federal government, essentially, who's trying to seize the land? It's a conflict of interest. They've been surveilling people, they've been conducting psychological operations upon this community. We've seen it going on. How many people in this community right now are operating in fear? They can't even come forward. There is a silent majority that exists right now, that has been caused to stay home because of the presence and the psychological operations being performed on this community. I believe the sheriff has that authority to take jurisdiction and control over that, and the community should at least know that the sheriff is the top law enforcement official in the county.
Thank you.
Tim, come here. And it's good, you bring your own stopwatch and have it go off. Good job, Pete. I don't know if Mr. Tantilli was here or not, but if you'll read our resolution, we identify that very clearly in our resolution, about the sheriff being the premier law officer. Here, he has that authority. We believe that, all of us believe that.
Thank you.
My name's John Pratt, and I'm from Cold Fork, Utah. And I came up here last night because I saw what was going on on the news. I...
And that's what will happen to you. And that's why we're here. I'm a mother of a lot of children and grandchildren. I am not afraid to take them out to the ranch. I'm not afraid of the Bundys. They're the ones, and I can tell you, God is with them. And God is with you. And you're righteous people. And our hearts went out in the Hammond's because we know how it feels. And we have to stand up, but we can never do it alone. We have to, united we stand, divided we'll fall. We have to work it together. We love you. You're our neighbors. You're our friends. And God loves all of us, and He loves this country. We have to stand and restore this Constitution or we've lost our country. God bless you. And we do help you and come and help us. If you can, we're here to help you. Come and see us.
My name is Pete Tantilly. And one thing that I've learned through this experience in talking to the community members is that people are now learning what the true authority is of a constitutional sheriff. I've heard that time and time again. And I want to suggest to the Committee of Safety that the public be informed that the sheriff is the top law enforcement official in the county. He has jurisdiction over the FBI. That if he needs the FBI, he calls them in. That he is not operating at the behest of the federal government. Because I believe, ladies and gentlemen, maybe you can tell the Committee of Safety, wouldn't it be a conflict of interest for the Federal Bureau of Investigations to be surveilling the community, finding out who's for or against, and then working on behalf of the federal government essentially, who's trying to seize the land? It's a conflict of interest. They've been surveilling people. They've been conducting psychological operations upon this community. We've seen it going on. How many people in this community right now are operating in fear? They can't even come forward. There is a silent majority that exists right now that has been caused to stay home because of the presence and the psychological operations being performed on this community. I believe the sheriff has that authority to take jurisdiction and control over that. And the community should at least know that the sheriff is the top law enforcement official in the county.
I can do it. Tim, come here. And it's good you bring your own stopwatch and have it go off. Good job, Pete. I don't know if Mr. Tantilly was here or not, but if you'll read our resolution, we identify that very clearly in our resolution about the sheriff being the premier law officer. Here, he has that authority. We believe that, all of us believe that.
My name's John Pratt, and I'm from Cold Fork, Utah. And I came up here last night because I saw what was going on on the news. I watched the reports, and I thought, I've got to get up there and find out for myself. I want to go meet those people. I want to see what's happening. And so I did. And we went out there this morning. We shook hands, and we met, we visited, and we talked, and we looked in their eyes. And then I come in here and I see what's happened. I got to tell you, this is heartwarming. This is beautiful. My dad spent 40 years, before he died, teaching the Constitution and the constitutional law around this country. And there's the one point I want to make. How many of you, you see that right there? That's all the founding documents. That's the Declaration, the Constitution, the amendments, all the extra ones they've thrown in since then, even the ones I don't like. Okay? That's all of it, right there, that one little pamphlet. To address the comment made earlier, do you have any idea how many times the Supreme Court has changed their rulings on the meaning of the Constitution? Do you think they're any smarter than you are? They're not. Okay? I guarantee there's people right here in this room that know more about the Constitution than most of the people in the Supreme Court. You believe that or not? It's true. Where's the property clause in the Constitution? Somebody?
Article four.
Section? Clause?
Two.
Right on. Two can do it. I think my counting book's bigger than your Constitution. You guys are doing excellent on time. Thank you.
I'm Wayne Smith, local rancher.
Eat the mic, Wayne.
Wayne Smith, local rancher. I think Bundys are waiting to see this before they leave. And there's another thing they're waiting for. They're waiting for the safety committee and the community to tell our sheriff to address the redress grievances document. How can Hammond's ever get a fair trial when the plaintiff and the prosecutor and the courts were all federal? There's no checks and balances there. I think we have, they're waiting for the community to show them that we have the passion and the drive to continue this, and then they can go home. But they also need our sheriff to address the redress agreement.
Hasn't signed the petition to have them released. I'd like to have everybody that hasn't signed the petition to have them released to do so and pass it on to your friends because that's the only way we'll have them released. There's only one way, and we all have to sign that, and we have to pass it on. Otherwise, they'll stay their way. We sit here and we talk about it. Thank you.
Do you want to address that, Tim?
Yeah, before that gets away, we have that petition on our website. So no matter who you think owns that website, we put that on there. We would like you to go to that, print it out, and use that petition. So, and if you can't get it on, if you don't have capacity to do the Internet, find somebody in your neighborhood that does, have them print it out for you, and use it that way. There's all kinds of people.
It's on the board.
And this is the information from right here.
A lot of people here don't even know how to work their cell phone.
Yeah. I brought that up. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Everybody's going to get a chance. You have a granddaughter that has a smartphone that's probably green or pink that can go on there and do that. So I knew that was going to be the issue, that this is at whitehouse.gov is where this petition is. But you all got kids, grandkids, that can make that happen.
Or great-grandkids.
Or great-grandkids. All right, next up.
About the petition, I noticed today that there's a second one started now from somebody, not the Burns, the guy at Burns started one. It's got 8,000 some odd signatures on it. There's a second one that looks pretty similar to this right now that's been started from somebody from Arizona or something. Don't get them confused. I don't know whether, maybe the guy that started the second one has good intentions, but don't divide and conquer ourselves.
Very good. Thank you.
Make sure it's this.
Whitehouse.gov is where the ones that need to sign.
All right, I'll see if I can do this thing.
Closer.
My name's Pat Holiker, and I spoke the other night at the town hall deal. And my phone has been ringing off the hook from ranchers that, excuse me, I'm not comfortable speaking in front of people.
That's all right, dude.
But you guys can understand that.
Don't worry about it.
There's a lot of folks out there who are scared, and they're scared of the government. This is America. We're not supposed to be scared of our government.
Yes, sir.
These ranchers, I can say conservatively, there's at least 60% of them that would love to stand up, but are scared of the repercussions from the BLM. That's a lot. That's not being reported in the news. They're reporting that the town of Burns is against what the Bundys are doing. I have yet to hear that from the ranching community. That's not what I get. When, I'm a silversmith by trade, okay? So I got lots of time to sit around. And I have yet, I engraved one pair of earrings in five days because of the response, the people that, please keep saying that, keep reiterating that, that we are scared of the BLM, that they will cut our permits. So keep that in mind when we're talking to these guys, that this isn't necessarily an accurate reflection of all the... The people out there that would like to step up and actually make a statement, but are scared of the... So for a lot of folks in the media and in town, they don't, there's no possible... Away from most of them to own enough deeded ground to run a sustainable, profitable... They destroy the value of your ranch. You can have a really wealthy, prosperous outfit, it's gone in the snap of a finger. So it's something to consider. This is a real impact on the local economy and to the individual.
There's nothing, he got started, but he didn't, it's deeded property. It was 66 permit away, your property right away. There is not a business owner in the state, in the nation, that is not, doesn't... Not stand risk to your deed being removed. Your name?
My name is Freeborn Patrick Kirkle. And I traveled three days to get here from Missouri because what I seen on the militia at all, and I did not fear the Bundys. I came out here, and what did I do? I avoided here, and I went out there because who do I... Everybody remember that, the fear that grips our hearts and... Everybody remember that, the fear that grips our hearts and... That has a chokehold on this nation.
What you just said, Freeborn, is you could have picked me up on your way through Nebraska, and I wouldn't have had to deal with the airlines. Thanks a lot. I just want to add this. We're not going to be here all night. I want, I don't want to discourage anybody that came from a long ways away because this is a national issue. We know that. But I want to make sure that everybody in Harney County... Kind of issues national monument. And the BLM, five, in that county in southern Utah, Shawna Cox, she didn't mention her name, but she was one of them. I'll tell you, I've been involved in, there's a long list. Hammond's, that's the latest. There will be more. I call it a long trail of abuses. It goes way back. I don't know what the solution is. I'm from Utah. I'm proud of what the American Lands Council is doing. Utah is trying to take the lead on this issue. They haven't got it figured out either. After my experience with Mary Bullock, I honestly walked away from my law practice for over 10 years because I was so disgusted with what I call the so-called justice system. The federal government has the power, the money, the resources to grind people right into the ground. It's tough. And so people who say, well, let's litigate, let's do this, let's... How can you match that? Nobody's got the resources to do it. There's got to be another way to do it. And there are people who've tried everything. Petitions for redress of grievances, grass marches with Grant Gerber and his group from the Pacific to the Atlantic, congressional hearings about the abuse of Special Agent Dan Love, who is orchestrates. How many of you know about what happened in San Juan County, Utah, for alleged violation of the Antiquities Act?
I do.
Where they kicked people's doors down at 6 o'clock, people like you. It happens. You do need to stand up. You're doing the right thing. It does my heart well. Keep it up. Godspeed and God bless. Never would have guessed they'd have to cut the attorney off.
How are you folks doing? My name's Brandon Repola. I'm an Oregon, I'm Oregonian, Springfield, Oregon. I was a Marine Corps, '92, '96. I was a scout. I was a scout, and I was in security forces. And I met the Bundys because of a YouTube video, seeing them being abused by the federal government. Myself being a scout, being a United States Marine, my job is to protect the citizens. My oath is to, is for the people. To see the abuse like that, that infuriated me and a lot of other people. I drove 18 hours not knowing anybody, my rifles, my pistols. That's what they understand, okay? Because they're going to do it to you. We worked on a sugar mine operation. I ran the security operation, okay? Yeah, a minority running the security operation, okay? So let's get away from that. You know, the militias or the 3%ers or the O'keepers are racist. Get away from that, okay? Let me tell you something. People of form in the Pacific Patriots Network, we've been here. In the organizations, we met with a prosecuting attorney. We went with the local judge. We met with the sheriff. I was giving coffees out to the deputies last night. I've met four different times, met with the FBI, giving them either coffees and also MCDs. Why is it that they're barricading themselves? Why is it that they're patrolling around, watching me when I'm trying to flag them down and introduce myself to them, to let them know what the 3%ers and Pacific Patriots are? How come they're not interacting with me to get to know me? That's what we're having to do because you don't have the fear, ladies and gentlemen, okay? Pacific Patriots Network, we are professionals, and we are for you, whether it's from Oregon, Washington, Montana, Idaho, Nevada, we're all over, and we're growing. It's something that you guys can be a part of. You don't even necessarily have to, but you guys continue to grow here where you're at, we can help you with that. You don't have to worry about the heavy hand, okay? Believe me, we have a lot of skilled individuals and professionals to be that buffer for you. So just know, you don't have to fear them anymore, okay?
Hock. Huro.
When you threw it out there, just kind of scared people. I'll tell you right now, I'm a lot more scared of those feds up there and not building that barricade than they're going to do right now.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
All right, we were discussing the Bundy. We could run a gun to start happening. We thought... That we had a problem here. And that problem has, I don't know if I was the first one down there, but I know I was down there the second day. They took it over Saturday, and I went down there Sunday. When I found out that they closed our schools, it made kids perfection. Monday, I told my wife to take the kids down there on a boat trip, the first day that they were kicked out of school. And so I'm a local with my federal government that I... It was to go visit a terrorist group, so-called.
Thanks, Blake Shelton. Since I was two or three, I don't remember. Anyway, I'm a ranch worker. Also been involved in natural resources in various capacities. Not much, not real, not real smart. But I do... Happen to know, and I'm going to bring a little bit of more... These AUNs were kicked everybody off their range. We may not agree with the particular fight that these guys picked. We may not agree that it was the right action in that situation. Like everybody's been saying, well, it happened, so we need to use it. But just remember, I want to give a little credit, you know, someone was very passionate at the meeting the other day, and rightfully so, about collaborative efforts and working groups and all the work and all the good people that try to be the buffer for us, that try to help us work with the federal government. And it was brought up that, you know... federal government. And it was brought up that, you know what, a lot of that work has just slowed the progression of federal takeover. And I agree, there've been some small victories. The sage grouse, you know, I don't get out there and work on a lot of stuff. I was very involved in the CCAA committee, or at least I showed up a lot. I don't know if I helped any, but watching the passion of people trying to combat that issue, trying to find the common ground, trying to be proactive, go out there, "We're going to do some of these things," even if we don't agree that they're the solution. "We're going to work with the federal government and we're going to stop this thing because the sage grouse do not need to be listed." Because we know that the listing is going to lead to them coming down on the ranchers and the land users, even when the science proves it doesn't need to happen. Now... We had a small victory. We had a small victory of the kind that happened when people try and work with the government on these issues. You know, you could say that the CCAA's and the participation of ranchers and land users out here maybe halted that listing, but I got news for you. They could wake up next year and list it. They could list it tomorrow for all we know. All it takes is one bureaucrat, one politician with enough power to influence bureaucrats, and they're working on it already, all right? They didn't list the sage grouse. You can be dang sure those agencies right now, and it is a proven fact, are working to enact, not regulation, not legislation that is. They're not doing it legally. They're just going to come in and say, "Well, now this is how we're going to manage because the sage grouse should have been listed, we think." So, sorry. Anyway. Just to make sure our media friends understand what he just walked us through, an endangered species listed by the government puts restrictions on land use. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife in the last six months said there is no reason to list the sage grouse as an endangered species. And yet, they said, "But we're going to use the restrictions on land anyway because it seems like a good idea."
I'm Jimmy O'Hagan. I'm a cranberry grower from up in Washington State on the coast of Washington. I grow wetland plants in wetlands. I learned about regulating, that the wheels spill out the wagon and they're trying to help put the wagons on back. It's not what's happening. They're in front of a snowball that's consuming all of this water and they're trying to slow it down. Hopefully, we can make a couple bolts and we can slow that down. Up in Washington State, I got involved when the federal government came in and tried to make the wetland or the Elk River Natural Reserve. They wanted to hold all humans out of the area because they thought they damaged the area. It was an area that my family had hunted and fished in for four generations. The county sold several school district lands that had been dedicated to school district to the federal government to go into this preserve. I put my foot in the door of the commissioner's office and I said, "Wait a minute. I want the same deal as you gave the Indians. I'm sorry, but I'm native. I've earned the right over four generations to be native, fish in that area like I did. My children, I wanted it for my children." The federal government said it was too late. We already paid the county. The county said it was too late. We already cut the deal. We stood up and... I wanted to start by thanking you people from Harney County to allow me to come here and share my knowledge. I didn't come with guns. All I came with my knowledge. And I want to really thank you guys for letting me do that. What happened with the Elk River Natural Preserve area is we changed it to the Elk River Conservation Area and we put the schools, the high schools, in charge of the land. I think it was a little over $50 million. Huge area. The schools are managing the timber resource in the area and fishing and it helped. The harvests of the timber, sustainable. The students are learning how to do this. They're going out there, participating in it, and they're learning how to do this, and it helped build three of the new schools in our area. And that's all I got to say. That's what I did. I loved it. There was one thing that was always the same, you know, no matter where you went, there was one rancher in that community that was getting picked on. And they were getting put out of business. There was... ...a rancher in Elko, when I worked in Elko, in the Ruby Valley, and I can't remember his name. ...so that he can prove beneficial use. The BLM took him and sold him. No court... ...support to you. Nothing. Just took the cow... That's as far as we're going. So I've been in North Dakota. I've been in Texas. I've been in Arizona. And points all in, this story is going on. There's a guy in Texas that has no BLM, never has. He's had his land, private land for generations. It's deeded. It's filed in the courthouse. The BLM showed up in the doorstep and said, "You know, really we wish we had never..." ...let that go, even though it never was our... Somebody's got to stand at some point.
Roosevelt's got something to do with that wildlife refuge. 1907, most people didn't realize the natural resource and that's where we're at today. The final thing that I want to say is thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you for... I'm not addressing that just because. Thank you for doing what you've done. I've had the opportunity to go to a lot of meetings and there's a lot of energy... ...here right now. Two weeks from now, there's not going to be the energy. How are you going to maintain? ...to the community. I'll be there for you. Anything you need, let me know. Tim.
Lots of different places. And I'll tell you what, we don't always agree on everything, but we agree... ...agree to disagree in a way that moves things forward. And this group is... Four times... ...different things we've set out. We did literally move it four times in order to get it... What they...
First thing you can do after you do your homework on the issues that we have... ...the first thing you can do is talk to the people who are not here. What did I... Why did you miss that? That was a great event. It was a coming together attack. We're going to have a meeting in about two weeks and at that general assembly meeting, we're going to vote on new... ...an additional members to our safety committee, executive committee, okay? So if you want to be involved with that, that you... The immigrant nation has tried to cut down on us with almost 99% of it because somebody told somebody something that was not true or they wanted to make sure that, or somebody else believed something that was bad. ...about what we were trying to do. We are you. You are our rights, as it was intended. And just come up and sign your pardon, we'll vote on your...
Are you taking media questions? Yeah, yeah. Do you mind if I... ...if I just ask you a couple questions? Do you mind? Well, I noticed it became very uncomfortable when I asked, I wanted to pose the suggestion that the FBI be kind of pushed out a little bit.
...allow the community members, because I see the...
I agree with that totally.
Okay, good.
Okay, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm saying this community, we're looking for help. We don't want opposition... ...position. We don't want to get distracted.
Yes, sir. And I guess my main concern was on behalf of the community. Making sure that there wasn't outside interference, just like that from the FBI.
Does it have a convocative question? Who is the plaintiff against... Did the court... In the sense, I'll work. And I wish you the best of luck, sir. And I'm going to try to do everything I can to support your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Don't let them do it.
I want to say thank you for throwing my question out because one of my questions was going to be if we...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Hey.
One of these times real soon, I need to talk to you, okay?
Okay, what do we...
On my Facebook, regards to militia and stuff and how good they're doing.
Oh, yeah, they're doing a great job.
Just like I told them. I've been in every...
I can. We're going to talk to the sheriff. That's one of our next things, but we need... We're six feet... We need to speak with you. Voice, six feet, do you do?
I'm my best, you know? You know, I didn't want to come in here and... But you know what? If somebody was saying, "Well, we've been..." They weren't very sensitive.
One more thing. If we got the resolutions in front of you, we're going to ask you to know how big our voice is going to be and how many people we can get to go out to vote to sign the resolution and give them a... There's nothing binding in that legally and just show that you're supporting us. We meant to take that... Come on, try the revolution machine.
Yeah, I want to get your comment. ...out to the community because everyone, especially those that are afraid to show up here, are watching us. Now, too far, just right off the... ...the side here.
Community understands that there are ways of doing things.